This is a special meeting. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on it, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. May I have a quick call roll, please?
Sure. Dick Robertson.
Here.
Brent Weed.
Here.
Keith Campbell is absent for right now. Morris Jones.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Sierra Messenger.
Also excused.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. So next we'll move on to, there's no old business because in the special meetings we're only doing new business tonight. And there's one item. This is the amended memorandum of understanding concerning the grasslands water supply and wastewater capacity pre-reservation. So tonight we have Jeff Jacob from Lebanon Utilities Attorney to explain what this, what we're doing here tonight and what the MOU says. So turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. First of all, thank you guys for coming out on a rainy evening to accommodate some sensitive time periods on this issue. I believe that the document that you've been presented with is one of the final pieces to the Lilly IEDC puzzle as they are working towards a fast approach in closing date. Last time I was in front of you, I had a, the original or the underlying memorandum of understanding. And to remind everyone, that was a somewhat of a unique request, pre-reserving, if you will, capacity, water and wastewater capacity for the Lilly project. That's something utility normally does. The ordinance, as it's been adopted not too terribly long ago, allowed for that with city council approval. So frankly, since this approval, and actually the MOU was originally drafted about this time last year, and then just letting pieces fall into place was part of the reason with the mayor's assistance that attracted Lilly to this site, that they had sufficient capacity and knew that they would have water and wastewater. So document sat for some period of time and then was approved, again, under pretty tight time periods in October. And frankly, things change. This is a very big project with a lot of moving pieces. And as part of the finalization of the agreements between IEDC and Lilly, this availability fee payment has been shifted around in terms of responsibility. And the IEDC has requested additional time to pay the portion of the availability fees. And they explained that this is for budgetary purposes to hit their next cycle. So that is outlined in the amended memorandum of understanding that you have before you. And a few items from that document that I'd like to highlight. First, you'll note that the initial payment of $10 million has in fact been received by the utility, is in the bank. We can confirm that that happened, you know, late last week or this week. And that 10 million will be applied to water and wastewater availability fees respectively. One of the new provisions in this amended MOU, because this was a pre-reservation of capacity, it was potentially refundable if zoning was not approved, various contingencies were not met. Since zoning has been approved, they filed and they are quickly moving towards pushing dirt, that contingency has been removed. And the $10 million is now not only non-refundable, but it's not, does not need to be used specifically for the LEAP project. So in other words, we could start spending that if we had received it under the original MOU. It had to be applied to the original, to the LEAP project to make that non-refundable. That condition has now been removed. This is treated like any other availability fee and has been banked for the utility for infrastructure projects. Now, the, the stickler is the second payment, the 11 million and change. You will note, there is a footnote. And that footnote is likely going to be a request that IEDC makes in to offset that second payment with infrastructure improvements they make for the benefit of the utility and ultimately the city for the grasslands project. Now, lots of moving pieces. I can't tell you now, as I stand here, what infrastructure that would be, whether it's water, wastewater, a combination, some part or all of that 11 million. But what I can suggest with some certainty is there will be a request by IEDC as we get further into this project for an offset for availability fees with that 11 million. Now, that is not an uncommon practice that we do with developers quite frequently. If they're going to upsize a line, you know, they build a line to serve their project, we offset, if we want it larger to serve others, then we will pay that cost difference. And we will allow that, that to be offset in availability fees. So this is a relatively common concept in practice. The thing to know is that that may be a request that is likely coming from them as we get further along. Now, one of the important elements of, for us, is understanding what that may be. And so the, at Mr. Baskel's insistence, we have put some dates and deadlines in on that second payment. And if we're either, if we're going to have an offset request, we've got to have an agreement in place by August 15th timed when that second payment was due. Now, what happens if they, we don't reach an agreement at our discretion, or a, the payment is not made, then the capacity's not reserved. It's back on the open market. And there's various things that could happen, but that's the concept behind this amended memorandum of understanding. Now, one other point, this went before the utility board earlier this week in one of their special meetings as well, and it received unanimous 5-0 approval, recommended, a recommendation to this body that they approve the memorandum, amended memorandum of understanding authorizing the general manager to execute it for IEDC. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would welcome your approval of the amended memorandum of understanding.
So Jeff, just to clarify, you know, we talked about a lot of things. So, so we're talking about, you know, the IEDC's talked about bringing us additional water to the city, serve the larger LEAP district. Or potentially, you know, and if they bring us additional water, you know, we would then need an upgrade at our treatment plant, right? Is that what you're talking about with the, they receive credits for that? Is that what you mean by that?
Correct. As we're looking at additional water sourcing and wastewater expansions, you know, if you're going to have additional water come into the city, you've got to have someplace to put it. And so there's upgrades to water and wastewater facilities and lines that are going to be needed to serve these areas, now parts of the city, of course. And so those infrastructure improvements is what IEDC would target as Lebanon utility, city benefiting projects that they would request an offset.
Now, Jeff, we're just talking about the grasslands project, correct?
That, the, correct.
I mean, this, what we're talking about here is what's really going to affect the Lilly's development, correct?
Correct. Correct. Now, what I don't want to miss-
So I guess what I'm getting, kind of questioning, the mayor's thought, okay, then I want to make sure we're right, okay, is that we're not talking about new water that have been coming here, we're talking about water that we're going to be providing already to the grasslands project.
Correct. That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
The, the capacity that's been reserved here and the availability fees are paying for water that we are sending to and allocating for the Lilly grasslands part of the project. Now, there may be other components that, this is a pretty large project, there may be other components that are related to those infrastructure improvements that aren't specific to grasslands, you know-
Or they may ask for a credit of this Lebanon-
Correct. Now, we have tried to target that. This is a big moving, lots of moving parts. So that may change, but that's been our request, is that it's specific to the grasslands project.
Okay. So, and to clarify, right, so for everyone watching at home too, I mean, so Lilly needs, essentially, between the 10 million that's been paid and the 11 million that's due at some point, that, that's what they would pay to have the water and the wastewater that they need now. But essentially, the IEDC is, is, you know, they're the ones that reserve it, so they're the ones paying it. So essentially, the IEDC's operating as the developer. And it's, it's really no different than if a, say, a neighborhood developer brought us additional water to the city to serve the city, we would give them a credit for the value of them doing that to us, right? So it's, so it's kind of, but it's like, you know, they, they get the credits earned on the first neighborhood, but because they brought the water, that helps them in future neighborhoods.
That, that's exactly right, Mayor. And the, that's the exact concept. We just don't know, because we haven't gotten far enough along into what those potential infrastructure improvements would be. What I don't want to do is to be in a position where August 15th rolls around and everybody's not aware of what's going on. Because I hear that those requests, I mean, the footnote was, was added to the agreement for a reason, right, by IEDC. So that, that's a very real possibility, but we've got work to do to understand what those are. And just one additional point, the $10 million has been paid and it reserves $10 million worth of availability fee, water and wastewater capacity. That's theirs, that, that's assignable to that site. If everybody walked away and said, hey, we're not doing anything further, the additional availability fee payment would not be made. And that 11 million worth of water wastewater capacity would be back on the open market. That 10 million would be assignable by IEDC to a potential other user. But that's capacity that goes to that site and has been reserved. Now, in this interim period between now and August 15th, the entire 21 million in availability fee paid, capacity has been reserved through August 15th. So that's, that's the important part for Lilly. And I'm confident we'll be able to work through some of the issues on the infrastructure offsets between now and then.
Yeah. So again, just to clarify, so if we, you know, let's say the, the IEDC doesn't bring us additional water, doesn't do anything to gain additional credits, I mean, we, Lilly would not have their full amount of water they've requested essentially unless they paid that 11 million dollars. And, and they've been through development, or they're, you know, they're going through development plans. So they may be in a situation where they've already had their, they may be, you know, working, construction approved, but they need that kind of remainder. And, you know, the city could then just not issue the certificate of occupancy for their buildings until they're, they pay their full freight essentially. So we'll, we'll get it somehow, either in additional infrastructure, water supply, expansion, treatment plant, or someone else will pay that 11 million dollars for that water at some point, correct?
Yeah. It is, is the, you know, there's a lot of words in this amended memorandum of understanding of dealing with those kinds of what-ifs. And, you know, as the attorneys and I have talked about that, and it's sort of been passed around to our office, you know, we're dealing with very small percentages of, but that's our job, is to pay attention to those issues and, and the mayor to worry about. You know, there's a provision in this agreement that says that if the 11 is not paid and there's not some agreement, that Lilly can step in and pay it themselves. And, you know, they are, you know, once they are closed, coming up very quickly, and they start down a path, I, I don't see how they could not want to reserve that capacity. So I, I'm confident that something's going to be worked out, you know, what that looks like. I wish I had more meat to the bone, and we're working hard to do that. But this leaves those kinds of issues open and I think protects the utility and ultimately the city as we're going forward in the best we can.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think we've all said this, and I think we've got a good understanding, but for folks that are watching this, I'm going to try and take it down to a real simple level. First of all, if folks don't know, you are the utilities, the Lebanon Utilities Attorney. So you're, you're looking out after our interest, right?
Correct.
You don't work for IEDC or Lilly or anything.
Correct.
So you're, you're looking out for us. They have paid us $10 million as they've agreed to. And with this memorandum of, of understanding, we're not giving up anything other than we're allowing the dates to be a little more flexible. And we may trade out some infrastructure in the future, but that will be determined.
That, that's correct. I'm also somewhat known as the fly in the ointment as far as IEDC and Lilly have been concerned on some of these issues. So you're, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. And actually, you know, that capacity is not being utilized right now. So there's really, you know, we've got a very short window of time that we're saying we're reserving it a little longer. And those capacities aren't being utilized. So we're not giving up a lot in that, in that regard for a very short period of time. So you're, you're spot on with your analysis.
I'm, I'm going to also take off of what Brent's saying here, just for the everyday person to understand. You said earlier that the 10 million locked in what Lilly needs. Is that correct?
Well, Lilly needs $21 million worth of capacity-
Okay.
-for their plans currently.
Fine.
And in the original memorandum of understanding, we, we pre-reserved that, strange term, I know, but we said, hey, you can have that in order to assist IEDC in locking down Lilly as a user for that site, right? So that capacity remains committed through August 15th. Okay? Now, August 15th, if it's not paid, they don't get that capacity.
Reserved anymore.
They don't get that capacity reserved any longer. Now, so it goes back on the open market. They could purchase it the next day, or we will have some availability fee offset agreement with them.
Now, what I need is the right language to talk to somebody on the street. Oh, this is all I'm asking. In total, Lilly needs $21 million to make it all work for them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
They, they need to pay us $21 million.
Well, here's where I'm going with that. We also know that this is the grassland and there will be other things up there. The question that we might get asked is, what about other people that might be coming in there along the way? Is that satisfying their needs? Thank you.
So-
In other words, is this a direct line to Lilly and nobody else gets to use it? Or that's, I think that's the question that we would have.
Oh, so, so is the, is the sanitary sewer line running north of town to the grasslands project exclusive for Lilly?
Is it capacity for others, other than Lilly? I guess is the question we would have.
Wow. So when I, we're talking about capacity, and just for everybody's edification, we're talking about 850,000 gallons per day of usage, water and wastewater, which is, translates into 1,700 and 2,700 EDUs, okay? Those, we're talking about capacity of water production at the wells and wastewater usage at the wastewater treatment facility. We're not addressing room in any of the lines.
Uh-uh.
That's not what this is about. So when we're talking lines to different properties that pushes waste back to the plant, those are a whole different spaghetti bowl of other capacity issues that the utility manages through its sanitary sewer lines and the like. This is dealing with, this is not guarantee, this is not capacity in a line. In fact, IEDC is responsible for building a line to the grasslands site. Your question may be, can anyone else tap into that? Well, that, that line is dedicated to the utility, and I cannot speak intelligently from an engineering standpoint on whether that line is being oversized or not, like what we spoke about earlier where we would upsize. I don't think so, but that doesn't mean that there isn't service in the area for others to utilize. So as a matter of fact, we have requested utility easements through the, the, the grasslands or Lilly site for utilities to extend beyond the grasslands project in case we would ever need to connect to that line to serve others. So plans are being made. I can't intelligently speak to that size of that line. Mr. Jones, I'm happy to get that answer after this meeting.
Right. The reason I'm asking is that we're, we have trouble discussing certain things with, with, with maybe people in our districts. So on one hand, we have this thing called grasslands, then we interchange it with Lilly.
Excuse me. It's, it's- Fan's blowing.
Yeah. On, on one hand, we have something called grasslands, which is why you're talking, then we interchange the word Lilly. I don't want to give the city the impression, or the people in the city the impression that this is only a Lilly thing. I, if it's a utility, I want to make sure that, that we're also serving Lebanon. Because that's, that's kind of the stickler right now when we're, we're have people arguing back and forth, is that you're only doing stuff for Lilly.
So, so Morris, I will say, so I'm maybe a little bit more bet in on the sizing of the, of the line to serve Lilly. They are making that bigger than what Lilly requires.
Good.
Right? So they are, you know, they are upsizing that. So as the development around it happens, there are additional users can hook on that, correct?
We just, I think as council, we just need to be able to say that.
Right. And, and these availability fees are paid by any new development that happens in the city, right? The, you know, coffee shop and the Taco Bell that's being built, like they had availability fees, right? So it's all based on that EDU that we set, right? So-
Just, just trying to anticipate questions that may be there.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. So that's, and that's kind of where the cities and where the utilities have been working with them to make sure that the, I mean, more than we have to serve the user, but also, we also don't want to have a pipe in the ground and someone goes up right next to Lilly and they got to dig the pipe up and upsize it, right? So they are planning that, assuming what's full build-out look like here, and then make sure that pipe's the right size to serve that.
That's just simple questions. That's good.
Mr. Jones, just to add on what the, what the, what the mayor said, the utility is, has been, continues to and will into the future, recognize that the Lilly site, whether that's called grasslands or somewhat, something beyond that, is not the exclusive user and beneficiary of the services of Lebanon Utilities.
Yep.
Period end of story.
That's good.
Lebanon Utilities is here for the citizens of, of the community and serves at that pleasure. So we have spent quite, quite a bit of time actually trying to make sure that we're carving out what the utility needs in order to protect its current ratepayers.
Yep.
And so that they are impacted, or they're not impacted or minimally so, related to this project. And I'm not talking about, I'm talking about Lilly, grasslands, and the remainder of LEAP. And those are conversations I'm sure we'll have into the future, but there's a lot of hours that are going into thinking about how we can best serve the city. You know, there's parts of our system that are aging. And, you know, we had, we went from an open sewer system city to a closed city. And the utility works very hard to make sure that those are closed. But that means that you're constantly improving and upsizing lines. And we think availability fees like this, and as development occurs, that that will enable us to continue to improve elements, aged elements of the system and expand to make it a better, more efficient, not only in its process, but in its cost system for, for the citizens of Lebanon.
That's good.
Any other questions for Jeff on this?
Yeah. It's my understanding that the IEDC was covering the entire cost of bringing water and providing sewer service for the grasslands project. So the availability fee that we receive, is that clear money for us?
Yeah. So just, just to make sure that I'm, when you say this project, we're talking about Lilly.
Correct.
Right now. Okay. So the $10 million originally, or the 21 million originally in the document, I asked for your approval in October, that money temporarily was not free and clear unless we applied that to infrastructure, engineering, costs related to the, to the Lilly project. Now, this amended memorandum of understanding, the 10 million is free and clear, can be used anywhere for any utility infrastructure project throughout the city. So water, wastewater respectively. If I'm understanding your question correctly.
And also to clarify, so the utilities is not going to be building the connection up to Lilly, right? That will be built by Lilly, IEDC, not the utilities, right? This is-
Come out of that 10 million.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. This, this 10 million that they paid us, you know, the overall 21 million, right, that essentially is paying the ratepayers back for having, you know, we've, we have a 5 million gallon water system for, million gallons per day water system for the city. You know, we use 2.5 of it. Lilly wants 0.8 MGD from that, right? So that's that, we, we put value on that available water, right? Having that water available in our system. That's the fee that the availability fee is, right? So it's not to construct this line to them. They're responsible for that. That's on top of, that's just, you have to pay us this fee because we have this water available for you, ready to go.
Right. Mr. Kincaid, it's a, it, I have looked at it and, and, you know, there's different ways to explain conceptually what an availability fee is. And it's part of the wrinkle that the things changed between Lilly and IEDC over the last several months. But it's almost as though it's an investment in a, into, you're making an investment in a system. Previous ratepayers invested in the system to make it what it is today. They're just ponying up their fair share like others before them have done. And like others to come will do the same.
It, it's almost like a joining fee at a gym, right? You've got your monthly pay you do every month at the gym, right?
Yeah.
You know, that's your utility bill, right? But you have to, you've got to pay 50 bucks to join the gym, right? That's, that's kind of what the availability fee is, because you know, the gym's built and they've got the machines, all that stuff, right? So you're buying into that gym essentially, right? So that's kind of how I've explained it before too. I think that's a, a fair analogy as well.
And these availab, availability fees are just for water and sewer.
That's-
That money is not going to be used for, or they won't build a road and try to deduct any money from that.
So I would be remiss if I didn't point out, Sandra Morgan, the CFO of Lebanon Utilities is here this evening. The, I would be kicked, beaten, and dragged down the stairs of this building if I said that it was to be used for anything else. No, sir. It is not for other infrastructure within the city. No, sir, it is not for other infrastructure within the city. In fact, those dollars have to be absent approval by the utility board on a pro-rata basis, water and wastewater specific, so.
And improvements, not just maintenance as well?
Correct, correct.
They have to be like, we need to upsize the station, or-
It's not salaries, it's not, it's not salaries, it's not any other, it's infrastructure improvement. You know, that would be lining, for example, or replacing lines, improvements at the wastewater treatment facility itself, all of those kinds of things.
Okay, I didn't phrase my question very good. What I meant was, if the IEDC improves a road, they can't count that improvement towards that $11 million due and all this.
Again, again, I dragged down the stairs kicking and screaming. The answer to that one, if I said anything else, no, they, that would not, that would not apply to that offset credit. This is utility specific, and that's the beauty, we're separate thing, right? We serve at the pleasure of the city, but we act on behalf of the ratepayers.
Yeah, they have to do improvements to our water or wastewater system, either upsizing that we want to see done to serve other areas, or again, bringing us additional water sourcing, or paying for expansions at our treatment plant to do those as well.
That makes it very clear. I know if I had that question, I know someone else out there had to have it too.
This is not a, this isn't for parks or roads, this is water or wastewater only.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, good question, thank you.
Jeff, on the second page there, paragraph 5G talks about the default of IEDC. Should they default? Okay. About the sixth line down talks about Lilly may, they're not obligated, but it says, but shall have no obligation to pay the second availability fee. I guess, I'm assuming they're not obligated to pay it, but they, but they could if they wanted to.
Correct. And that's, you know, that's part of their investment protection, right?
Okay, okay.
But again, though, right, that if they don't, if they don't pay it, they don't get the additional $11 million worth of water and wastewater capacity provided.
Yeah, it becomes, and if you, yeah, if you, it goes on shortly thereafter to say that if it's not, it goes back and it's unreserved, it's back on the open market.
Right.
Right.
I can't see that happening after they've started work, but-
I would think a $11 million payment to us would not, they wouldn't, they would not make that payment to be able to turn the switches on in their 2.1 billion dollar manufacturing facilities.
Right, that's correct.
And there, you know, there would be, there would be lots of wrangling before that would happen, and lots of discussions before we would get to any point like that. And I would see that as more of a, you know, a 180 on the project issue before we would see something like that.
Any additional questions for Jeff?
Not for me.
Sandra, anything you want to say?
No, I think Jeff handled it well.
Okay, great. Any public comment concerning this topic? Okay. Saying that, any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Would then entertain a motion. We have this as Ed as the signer, correct?
Correct, consistent with the October MOU. And so my request to the board would be to, a motion to approve the amended memorandum of understanding authorizing Ed Baskel to sign on behalf of the Lebanon Utility Service Board.
Okay. Would anyone like to make the motion?
I would make a motion. We approve the amended memorandum of understanding for the grasslands water supply and wastewater capacity pre-reservation, and Ed Baskel, our GM of Lebanon Utilities, would sign for us.
We have a motion there, a second?
Second.
Second for Vic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Jeff.
Again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that concludes what I had on the agenda tonight for, is there anything from council? Okay. No claims, obviously, this is a special meeting, so would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion adjourned from Mike, and a second from Morse. All serious, aye?
Aye.
Are you opposed? You're for it, or you're for it? Okay, you're for the adjournment, all right.
You mean me?
We are adjourned, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you.